Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Hewer?
Excuse?
Ms. Patchen, here. Mr. Rakowski?
Here.
Mr. Sang?
Here.
Mr. Zoff?
Here.
Mrs. Gadston?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here. Emery, want to review the fire exits?
The fire exits are on either side of the cafeteria.
I need a motion to waive items 2.01 through 2.10.
Motion to waive agenda items 2.01 through 2.10.
Second.
Can I pull 2.10?
Sure. Alright, so we're going to pull 2.10? 2.10, you said? I need a motion to approve 2.01 through 2.09.
Motion to approve agenda items 2.01 through 2.09.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I need a motion to to discuss 1.0, new business?
2.10.
And a second? No, that's right, it's good. And a second? Anybody second? 2.01?
2.01.
2.10, I'm sorry?
Second.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to suspend Policy Number 1230, public participation at board meetings. We have 4.01 open to the public. I think the public should be afforded at least more than three minutes. And if there's any repeats, they should give it some back to the podium.
Motion to suspend Policy Number-
Policy 1230, which is public participation at board meetings.
Hold on, I'm just writing.
So are you saying for this meeting-
Can you say that again, Anthony? Motion to waive Policy 1240?
Yeah, motion to- to suspend.
Alright, thank you. Oh, not worse. Motion to temporarily waive Policy Number 1230, public participation at board meetings.
So, did we make a motion?
He made a motion.
No, he needs a second.
He needs a second?
Or do you need clarification?
I'll second.
Alright, so comments or questions? Did you have a comment about that, Mike?
So are you looking to, for this particular meeting, looking to waive the three-minute time limit for public participation? Is that what you're-
Yeah, I'm looking to waive- In that, the policy, there's a restriction that every speaker can only speak three minutes. Only speak, we speak once. There's a, there's a tighter format that's pretty much every person that wants to speak only has one shot at saying something. And I feel that the base, this is, first of all, this is our only topic that we're discussing, is the assignments. Teacher assignments, and I think it's very important that we have a better conversation with the public. But I think setting those rules may help with that.
What structure would you want to put in place, though? Because we can't have it just open in a free-for-all. So, like, how many times, like, what would the structure or constraints that you put on it?
I think that we should set up some ground rules. I think, first of all, allowing people to speak, know, over their, over each other.
But, but, go ahead, Georgia.
That's part of the policy. It's, it's the, in the way they conduct their manner and providing their comments.
So, just to be clear, the motion was to suspend a three-minute time period in, in Policy 1230?
The three-minute time period and the ability to come back at the podium. You only can vote once at the podium.
So how many times would you allow?
As many times as possible as needed.
So what would be the timeframe that you would cap it at?
I wouldn't cap it.
So we could-
That's my personal feeling. I'm open to conversation if you want to cap it somewhere. But I feel that this is our, this is our only topic that we're discussing. And we should spend the time to listen to the public and have somewhat of a conversation.
Well, Anthony, do you have the ability to submit in writing the balance of what they're trying to say? Would that, would that, would that help you in where you're at?
No, I think everyone has been submitting in writing, but I don't think they've been getting any responses. They're looking for-
Is that your opinion, or is that actually-
That's my opinion. We can ask. Because I know also, we have, you know, we don't have to answer public comment, but we do. So it would be nice if we answered some of the comments that came up to the podium. If, if they weren't clear as to what the answer was, they can come back to the podium and ask again. I think that's the kind of, I think that, that is the atmosphere that I wanted to create.
I understand why, so I just want to articulate in the motion to make sure that it's what you're looking for. So the motion is to suspend a three-minute time period and allow people to come up more than once for public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
I would make a motion to amend your motion to-
Well, you can ask me to amend my motion.
My, my comment is, if we, I would, I would request to stick with the 60-minute overall time period.
Yeah, I'm hesitant to do that because it's our only topic tonight.
Okay, so, the first motion was to suspend Policy 1230 and waive the three-minute time period and allow people to come up more than once. The amendment to that was to suspend Policy 1230, waive the three-minute time period, and allow people to come up more than once, but put a time cap of, overall of 60 minutes.
That's correct. It's a single period, not to see 60 minutes as the time. So I would like to amend to keep that piece of it.
Okay. So, let's go back to the first motion, and then we go to that, and then we vote on the amended motion?
Well, since-
Do the amended motion first.
The main motion was to suspend the policy. The amendment to the motion was to maintain, amended to maintain 60 minutes. You would vote on the amendment?
No, but Anthony said that you could ask him.
To vote on the amendment first?
Right.
So Kenya, so Mike made the motion to amend and add that it's a three, we're going to waive the three-minute time period and allow people to come up more than once, but to stick to the hour time limit. Kenya, second that?
I agree to stick it to the hour.
Okay, comments or questions on that?
Is that what he wanted, is that his original, that's what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, that's not what I wanted.
I know, but we're gonna, we're gonna-
I'm very willing to-
Do the amended motion first.
I guess the only thing I would say is-
Hold on, Bill, can you grab the mic?
I believe that the discretion of the board president to, you know, if you feel that somebody is taking too much time, and one person could take the whole hour, and then, you know, and that's not really what we're intending to have either. So I would just say, you know, I believe the discretion, say, you know, you've talked for long enough, let's, let someone else have a turn. You know, I just, I don't want one person to monopolize the entire hour.
So what do you think of just increasing the time instead of three minutes? Because we had all agreed previously that we wanted to go to four minutes because we saw that people still had more to say at the three-minute mark. So we had agreed on that, and we said we were going to go back during the policy meetings to address that. So would it be fair to say that if you, if I go with Mike's motion, but say instead of just temporarily suspend the three minutes, how about just make it in five minutes? So that this way, we know that someone's not getting cut off, and we actually set it up that way. So what do you think of that, Anthony?
It's hard to say. We'll know when people come to the podium, which is why I'm not even the other way. I also say that, I mean, I will agree with Bill's discretion. And, but I will also apply it, I will also apply it to whether or not, you know, we're 60 minutes or 65 minutes, you know? Maybe somebody in the middle of, of, of saying something, and there could be a discussion, and it could be a good discussion of where we can go forward, and move over together that another five minutes is an emergency.
So, I, I don't, I guess I'm missing your concern with what the policy is currently. Are you afraid that people aren't going to be all able to voice their opinions if they signed up to speak tonight?
Yeah, I would like a better exchange with the public. And right now, the way it's formatted is, you come up to the podium, you say what you want to say. You only have three minutes to say it. You may get an answer right away. You may not get an answer right away, you may get an answer later, you may not get an answer at all. The answer provided may not have, may not have, may not hit the mark. And there, you know, maybe a need to go back. I know in the other meetings that we've had already, even though it's not allowed, there have been some negligible exchanges with the public in terms of answering and clarifying questions. I don't, it didn't disrupt the meeting, regular meeting. I just want to formalize it so that no one, so everyone has a chance and feels that they're included in the conversation.
I see.
Alright, so we have, alright, so we have to vote on the motion that's on the table first, I believe, because we can't do an amendment to the amendment. Correct? So the first, the amended motion was to waive Policy 1230, to not have the three-minute time period, allow people to come up as much as they want, but put a cap on 60 minutes. Kenya, second that? You second that, correct, Kenya? So we gotta vote on that one first? So are there any comments or questions regarding that amendment? Motion, sorry.
I have a question. Can we just give it a five-minute timeframe for each person? And that can see the, so I make a motion to-
Wait, wait, let's vote on this one. So, well, so the, so the amended motion on the table was to cap it, basically cap it at 60 minutes, consistent with the policy.
Correct. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Can we do a roll call for that, Kelly?
Ms. Patchen? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Sang?
Nay.
Mr. Zoff?
Yes.
Ms. Gadston?
Nay.
Mr. White?
I'll say yes.
It's still four to two, we didn't get a quorum. Alright, so the original motion was then to waive Policy 1230, allow for the three-minute time period, and allow people to come up more than once, but there was no time limit on it.
Can you repeat that?
So, the motion was to suspend Policy 1230, waive the three-minute time period, allow people to come up more than once, but not have-
60 minutes.
The 60-minute-
Cap.
Cap. That was made by Anthony. Mike, you make a second for that? Okay. Any other comments or questions to that? Alright.
I have a motion to make amendment, to make motion. And that was to maintain a, a, a five-minute limit per person instead of the three minutes. So that would be my motion for the-
I second that.
So Mike made a motion to put a five-minute cap. Are you still allowing the people to come up more than once?
Not in this motion.
Okay. Alright, so the motion that is on the table right now to vote on is to suspend Policy 1230, waive the three-minute time period, but put in a five-minute time period, and not allow people to come up more than once, but still adhere to the 60-minute timeout.
Second.
Kenya, second that? Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm confused now. So my, my motion is to, my motion is to, to waive the three minutes, to waive the, the, the one-time-only podium, and to waive the 60 minutes. Now, I'm amenable to putting the, to increasing the five minutes as long as we can waive the other two.
Okay, so the motion, we're working on it. The motion is to suspend Policy 1230, waive the three-minute time period, allow people to come up more than once, not have the 60-minute cap on it, and allow people five minutes instead of the three minutes. That's the motion on, that was seconded by Kenya. It was made by Mike. All those in favor?
I, the amendment was only for the five minutes.
Yeah.
Not to have the 60 minutes.
You have the cap, yeah.
He said to adhere to the 60-
To adhere to the 60 minutes.
Right.
No, that's not what I understood.
No, he's, he's-
So the motion to suspend Policy 1230-
Right.
To waive the three-minute time period, replace it with a five-minute time period, allow people to come up more than once?
The only thing I was addressing in my amendment was the five minutes.
Okay. So the amended motion that Anthony originally made, Mike made an amendment to the motion, was to suspend Policy 1230 and waive the three-minute time period and just have five-minute time period and adhere to the rest of Policy 1230. Did I get it correct?
My amended motion was only the, that instead of not having any time period per person, change the three to a five.
So say the whole thing, Mike, so this way-
So to allow, so to allow to keep the 60-minute time period-
Consistent in time.
And only allow the, them to come up once.
No, no, we already voted the, that we, that we're not going to stick with the 60-minute cap. That voted down, did it?
That got voted down.
Right.
So you can introduce a new motion.
So my new motion is about, is allowing instead of, instead of known cap on a, per person, that it would be a five-minute cap.
Yeah, if he's amended my motion, then the other two, I would think that the other two stipulations was still wrong. He's only amended part, one of three of my-
Right, we're only voting on the amendment of changing three minutes to five minutes.
Correct.
That's the only thing we're voting on, my amendment. And then, if we, if we vote, if we agree with that, then it gets rolled into the whole.
No, the motion fails. You have to be ready.
His amendment failed, not the whole motion failed. We didn't get to Anthony's amendment. Mike made a second amendment to the original motion. And what he was saying was to put a five-minute time period in there, but to allow people to come up more than once, and to not adhere to the 60-minute time.
But I didn't touch the, I didn't touch the more than one.
Right, so that's in there.
He didn't touch that, no, that's what I'm saying, Mike. That's what he's saying, that's why-
Pull up, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what you're saying, Mike. Are you, do you want the more than one to come up? Do you want that suspended? Because that was in Anthony's motion, to suspend the three minutes, to allow people to come up more than once, and to have the 60, and waive the 60-minute timeline.
Right, okay, so I wasn't, I wasn't, it was, so I wasn't touching the more than one, so that would still be part of the motion, correct?
Correct. So you're just saying to add the five-minute time period, allow people to come up more than once, and to have, and not have the 60-minute time period?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I, so everyone's clear? It's to suspend Policy 1230, waive the three-minute time period, but put a five-minute cap on it, allow people to come up more than once, and to have, and not have the 60-minute time limit. Everyone clear on what you're voting on?
Not have the 60 minutes on it.
There's, there's no 60-minute time limit. Does everyone understand what we're voting on? Alright, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Okay, let's do roll call, please.
Ms. Patchen? Opposed. Mr. Rakowski?
Opposed.
Mr. Sang?
Aye.
Mr. Zoff?
Yes.
Ms. Gadston?
Nay.
Mr. White?
Yes. That motion failed. Alright, so the original motion was to suspend Policy 1230, waive the three-minute time period, allow people to come up more than once, and have a 60-minute, and waive the 60-minute time limit. There was a second, Mike seconded that original one first, so now we're voting on that. Georgia, do you have a question? Sure, so it was to, the motion was to suspend Policy 1230, waive the three-minute time period, allow people to come up more than once, and to not have a 60-minute time limit. Okay? Everybody clear on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
We'll do roll call.
Ms. Patchen?
Opposed.
Mr. Rakowski?
Aye, in favor.
Mr. Sang?
In favor.
Mr. Zoff?
Opposed.
Mrs. Gadston?
Opposed.
Mr. White?
In favor. So, all the motions failed to change the public comment session, so we're going to adhere to Policy 1230. So, I need a motion to waive, agenda, oh, we already addressed it. Is there any other new business that needs to be addressed? Alright, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Adjourn, motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular, of particular individuals, to discuss the proposed sale of real property when publicity would substantially affect the value thereof, for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining with the Beacon Professionals Association, and to seek legal, legal advice from the school attorney. The board is expected to take action after executive session.
Any second?
Second.
Mike got it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion third. We'll be back as soon as possible. Alright, so we apologize for the long delay. We had a lot to discuss, and we weren't trying to exhaust you and try and make you get tired, and maybe that wasn't the tactic, we really were talking about concerns that needed to be talked about. But we do apologize, I do apologize personally that it took so long. So, we're going to start with open to the public. We had one person sign up, but before we start, I just asked Emery to, to just, to kind of talk about, because we heard the concerns, there was a lot of chatter on social media. I don't have social media, and I was going to text about the chatter, so we thought that we need to be as proactive as possible, and I just want Emery to kind of give you the rationale and so forth behind some of the decisions that are on the agenda today. But we also realize that, we understand that we need to do a better job, and there's ways that we need to improve. We're working on it. I can tell you that, being on the board for three years, the, since July, I felt like I've been running a marathon. Prior to, I thought I was running in quicksand. We are getting things done. Looking at the priorities that we had to do before we, from July to now, my number one concern was making sure that we have a search firm in for the superintendentcy. I'm really concerned about not having two vacant board seats. It's hard to get a quorum. I'm happy that six out of seven people are here tonight, but it's very concerning that we have two vacant seats, so we need to really set a process for that. And I really think that we need to start looking at goals. We haven't had four goals in two years, and it's hard to make decisions, for the superintendent to make decisions when there's no goals to us, well, how does it meet this goal, or how does it meet this goal? So, going forward, I hope that we could get to those, and I know that process is something that we're working on. And I acknowledge that it's something that we need to improve on in the communication component. With turnover rate that we've had, it is, communication is tough. And knowing how to communicate and what we need to do to communicate to meet all, all people's needs. So, we are definitely trying to work on it, but we do hear you, and we are listening. I apologize that it hasn't been addressed sooner. But with that said, I'll just turn over to Emery, so she can give you some rationale.
Thank you. So, excuse me, but I just, I typed it up so that I wouldn't go off topic, so I just want to read. I, I wanted to say first a few words about the appointments that are on the agenda. So first, we're happy to recommend on this agenda four teachers and a social worker for the board to approve. And so far this summer, we've appointed six teachers so far, an elementary principal, permanent substance, our leave replacements, and there are more appointments to come on the August 29th board meeting. On this agenda tonight, we're asking the board to vote on four internal candidates. We are recommending Dawn Candello to be our new director of PPS, and Eric Wright to be our new executive director of curriculum and instruction. Dawn and Eric are both successful building administrators that will bring the many years of experience to central office. The director of PPS position was posted originally on June 28th, both internally and externally on OLS. We had a total of 36 candidates applied. Eleven candidates met the minimum qualifications. Five were contacted for interviews, and three candidates accepted the interview. One candidate later declined because they had accepted a position in another district. After the interviews were conducted, the committee agreed that none of the candidates had the necessary experience to be the director of PPS. At the board meeting on August 8th, I said publicly that we would repost the director of PPS position. After further thought, we did not repost, as we believe we would get the same candidate pool as we did the first time. We knew that Dawn Candello had worked in our PPS department in the past, as a school psychologist, and later as an assistant director, and reached out to her to see if she'd be interested in the position. We posted internally for the executive director position, and Eric Wright was the successful candidate. Cassandra Orsor and Ashina Baez have both expressed an interest in becoming elementary principals and had applied for the principal posting at South Avenue. Both have experience as assistant principals in our district and the district in New York City. The district is granting all four of our administrators a leave of absence from their current positions. As the district is continuing to change and grow, our four administrators should be afforded the security of returning to their current positions after one year. All staff at Gleman Forestal were notified of this change on Friday afternoon before the agenda was posted. Both Dawn and Cassandra, and Eric and Ashina have planned a meeting to meet and greet their buildings to have a smooth transition. Thank you.
So with that said, we'd like to open up to the public comments. I do see that Lori has signed up. The other two cross off.
Hi. My name is Lori Mirdage, parent in the district. I've been coming up here and asking questions for over a year. As you know, often about the pupil personnel services office, and expressing my concerns about the leadership of that department. I've been called into meetings with Ms. Rumley and Ms. Quirone to express my concerns. We discussed best practices for hiring, and how to proceed to heal our district by working in a transparent fashion in partnership with stakeholders. But here in Beacon, we still seem to have leaders see themselves in opposition to the parents in the community. I am thankful at least that the public has been given a couple of days to digest and discuss the agenda for this meeting, and to have an opportunity to speak publicly here before the board, so thank you for that. Doing frequent and confusing administrative maneuverings mere weeks before the start of school breaks down the trust teachers have for their leadership. And then there's the ongoing issue that I keep coming up here to address, the Office of Pupil Personnel Services, that handles all of special ed and some of Beacon's most vulnerable students. We have heard many criticisms about the PPS office in the last year. There was poor communications, teachers seemed to be, felt left in the dark, parents were confused about who was handling what, as the department was seemingly reorganized. The same confusion and frustration has been felt by parents and teachers. Ms. Rumley explained to me in our first meeting, all about the PPS overhaul she was initiating, organizational structures and roles and components and data, and all kinds of things that the average parent like me doesn't fully understand, admittedly. I accepted it, I do accept that, and I understood that when all the dust was settled, we'd have a better PPS office, and we'd be well on our way to an improved school district for the kids. But then we were presented with the fact that the new PPS director was vacating the position after only a year, leaving a lot more questions and answers about the future of PPS, and therefore our children with special needs. So now, in the last year of being neck-deep in the goings-on of the school district, I can say with confidence that Dawn Candello may very well be the strongest administrator we have here in Beacon, and I have full confidence that she will do an excellent job making sense of what is about to be handed to her as our new PPS director, and I do feel very positive about it. But what I don't feel so great about is the fact that it appears that the PPS department has been used as a stepping stone for Ms. Rumley to obtain a promotion without anyone really evaluating her work in PPS. It appears as if her priority was not to look out for the best interests of Beacon's most vulnerable kids, but to take advantage of a vulnerable period of transition in the Beacon City School District to obtain the promotion, thus abandoning the work that still needs to be done in PPS. And then there are these administrative appointments that I know you'll be voting on today. And here we are, it's the 11th hour, we have all been backed against the wall. I'm not asking the board to vote down tonight's instructional personnel agenda. Honestly, I feel like there's really not much of a choice. If it fails, once again, the kids and their teachers will suffer, but that is by design. The first chain of vacancies occurred this past spring with the promotion of Ms. Rumley and the vacating of the director of PPS position, and thus began the reshuffling of administrative positions that we are seeing here tonight. In conclusion, my argument tonight is not that those being appointed will not be competent at their jobs. I believe they will be. My argument tonight is that the Beacon City School District absolutely cannot afford to continue to be led by people who are helping themselves before they help our kids.
Lori, the second. Is there anybody else?
Um, hello, um, sorry, I didn't sign up. I never sign up, I always-
Not a problem, we, you know, just bring it on.
My name is Brayden Smith, I'm actually a parent of two students who will be in J.B. Forestal hopefully in a few years, and also a resident and taxpayer in the district. And I've come up here to speak, I actually spoke a few board meetings ago about appointment issues and about hiring processes. And obviously, I was surprised, like many a beacon, to see that this had occurred, and that these transfers and appointments were happening in the district with very little lead time for anyone to make any sort of process about whether they were good for the district or not. It was a process that was done in a closed system, with very little input from the public, very little input from parents. I honestly don't know what internal process was done to ensure that these are actually the best decisions for the district, how those candidates were evaluated internally. But I don't believe that there were any public participation in those, in that process at all. all or parent involvement. To make such huge changes in the district, you're going to have three of your four elementary schools with new principals. One done in barely the way that it should be. I think South was a good, if somewhat flawed example of how to hire a principal, but two, being appointed at the last minute with no parent involvement, no discussion among parents about how those principals should be leading the school. This is what we've been trying to say, I think, as parents. It's about involvement and it's about being part of the process. So, this is a frustrating moment, even if these appointments might be best for the district in the short run, they're not at all, this whole process is terrible for the district in the long run. I think every decision that was made by the, by a hiring process that was made during the summer in upper level administration had serious flaws, even the one that had a hiring committee had serious flaws. That hiring committee proposed a candidate that was not accepted by the superintendent and that is a cause for concern for the board, to say you had a hiring committee, you put in place something that is a best practice for how to hire administration in the district and the district didn't listen. So I think you need to take into consideration that the district set up a board-directed hiring policy and it needs to do it as soon as possible for the next summer when these administrative changes happen. You have a policy in place that says there needs to be a hiring committee, there needs to be parent participation on the hiring committee, it has to occur for every single senior level administrator and it has to include an open, competent competitive process, which means posted with outside candidates considered. I think that is the best possible way to make sure that the decisions that the district is making are the ones that make everybody else in the district feel confident that they're best going forward. So I thank you for my time and I thank Lori for her thoughts too.
Thank you.
I appreciate your comment, I just wanted to make a couple of, just a couple of thoughts here. And I think for Beacon, since I've been here for eleven years, I don't think that we've done any internal promotions or transfers within the district. I think that there are districts out there that only post internally if they feel that they have candidates that are capable of taking a position. So I think, I have to agree that we haven't seen this in Beacon, I don't think that it's unusual, but I think it is different than the way we've always had to do it. So, I just wanted to say that, you know, the internal process is a little bit different, but I think it's something that we should be looking towards to reward people that have been in our district that aspire to be something different and move and grow within their career without actually losing them to another district. Thank you.
And I'll just speak on behalf of two of the three candidates for the evaluation process and so forth. I know that two of them received tenure not too long ago, whether it be a year or a little bit longer after that, so the board did review when they were appointing for tenure, but besides that, we haven't, but I know that we, the board reviewed when they were being appointed for tenure. Is there any other public comment?
I had prepared to talk a little bit about communication, but I feel like the first and kind of most important thing is while maybe moving, posting internally or handling practices that way is not unusual, it sort of skips past probably the most important thing, which is right now in Beacon, we are not typical. We are not. We have been through a terrible year because of upheaval and change and the break in trust. That is not usual. How many school districts have their buyouts but on the front page of the Pecosy Journal? I don't think any of us feel good about being here right now. If you think that it's hard to be in your seat, it stinks to be sitting out here on a Monday night in the summer and waiting just so that we can have a really uncomfortable conversation. It's really, really unpleasant and no one wants to be here and no one wants to do things this way. And I think that what's probably most challenging for a lot of the people who've been engaged in this process is transparency, participation, and above all, respect for the community could have prevented us from being in this exact situation. I think that I've heard a couple of times about people loving Beacon, "I love Beacon, I'm here because I love Beacon, I'm here because I want to help Beacon." And I feel like we really need to look at what those words mean because love doesn't exist without respect. If you love Beacon, you respect the community. You respect it by returning phone calls, you respect it by answering emails, you respect people who live here and make their lives here and who put their kids in your care. And all of this, you know, change has led us to a place where we have uncomfortable conversations. I told my daughter, she's not going to have her principal there next year, which doesn't seem minor, but when you think about a kid facing school, you know, going back on the first day, they have anxieties, she cried, she'll get over it, but at the same time, that's who we're here for. And so, we can't say, you know, anything about this situation is usual. We really need to name the fact that this was a rough time, that this needed, there needed to be special communication, special care, extra effort.
One second.
Okay. And I feel like that's the missing piece, that's what hasn't existed. And even if, and the thing is to say, please trust us again, there wasn't, there wasn't a huge amount of trust to build on to begin with. So, you know, it's not really, it's asking for a leap that's hard for a lot of people
So, Kristen, I don't disagree with you, it has been a terrible year, it has. And I, I have respect and empathy for the parents, you may not agree with me this evening, but I am going to say it, okay? Well, I'm, right. But I want, I want the parents in the room to understand as well and we're not taking away from anything that you have been through, but I have to speak up for the staff. It's been a tough year for everyone here. It's been tough for the administrators and the teachers, it has. And I'm not going to, I can't fix that, you know, I'm a fixer, I try to fix things and make sure that things are better. And I like things to change real quick. So Anthony mentioned that we've been on this sprint since July 1st, right? And the board's intention is to make Beacon better and we want to do it now and we want it done, but it just doesn't work that way. So, you know, that frustrates me too because I don't like things to be that way. But I, I just, I want to just say that everyone here was hurting, it was a big, you know, what happened this year affected all of us in some way, the board members as well, the new board members that are sitting here. You know, I think we're still, our goal is still to make, to do what's best for the kids and we're not always going to agree on the process and we need to work on that, I totally agree. And, you know, the parents are speaking about transparency and I'm all for transparency, but in some aspects, I can't be as transparent as you like, being, sitting, seeing and being the administrator. So we have to work on some kind of a middle ground, so where that you feel trusted and respected, but then I can still uphold and do my job here and, you know, protect some of the confidentiality that goes on. So, we need to work on that, it's not going to be fixed and, you know, I feel bad that you don't feel respected because that wasn't the intention. The intention was to put people where I felt their strengths were and to move the district forward and try to heal from what happened last year, so thank you.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Maggie Brown and I am a parent of this one who has an IEP. And I'm very concerned because my son has had a great battle for eight years. And I listened to Lori and I listened to all the other parents and it was like they were speaking right for me and I appreciate them, thank you so much. I would like to let you know that when you put a person in position, think about our children, there's a lot of children that have IEP that have fallen through the cracks. My son will graduate. My son feels that you have forgotten him. He feels like he doesn't have a voice and I'm fighting for him. Ms. Frank Mulhern, they are the only people that I have worked with for the eight years. I've never met a director, I've emailed them, they've never contacted me back. I'm hoping that Mr. Eric, which is going to be the new director, that he reaches out to us. I know for a fact that there's a parent right now that her son will not graduate Bosse's. He is in a GED program at seventeen years old. I will not mention his name because of the HIPAA right, but he lost. I will not mention my son's name because of his own HIPAA right, he is eighteen. I don't want him to lose. There are other children that are in Bosse's, that are in Kaplan, Carrier, that are in Fox Metal, that they travel an hour to go to school to make it. There are some kids that fight with anxiety, with depression because they feel that Beacon doesn't care. I implore you to reevaluate who you put in position because when you have this flippy floppy, this person here, they leave another person, it's not that we don't feel that you don't respect us, but we as parents, we need you to hear our children's voice, it's not even about us, it's about our children. You're going to retire, who's going to fill that spot? They're our future, they're the ones that need an education. My son is just as important as a child that passes the Regent's with a ninety. Please, I, I'm begging you, please, think about our children that have IEP, Special Education Lives Matter. Thank you.
All right, that's going to be the end of the public session. We do have one item to add to the agenda and that is a resolution number 081516K. I'm just going to ask Ms. Getz, can you read it?
Resolution number 081516K, be resolved that the board hereby grants the student discipline appeal in accordance with the letter dated July 1st, 2016, in the matter of suspension of student number 89005. And be it further resolved that the board hereby authorize the superintendent and building principal to take the necessary steps to expel the suspension from the student's permanent record.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve, I'm sorry, the instructional personnel agenda 5.01.
Motion to approve instructional personnel agenda, just say as listed.
As listed.
On the agenda.
With the addition of 081516K.
With the addition of resolution 081516K.
Do we want to, could I pull some of the pieces out of it?
We can, but we just need a second and then I'll say comments or questions and then we could go.
Second.
Mike seconding, comments or questions?
I want to call Alpha and Echo.
Is there a specific resolution or all resolutions? E, all of E?
All of Alpha and Echo.
So we need a motion to approve consent agenda 5.01 minus 5.01A and 5.01E. Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. So I need a motion to approve 5.01A.
Motion to approve 5.01A.
Second. Comments or questions?
If you just, you know, then we have one, two, three, four, four personnel on the list of A. If you just step through the process that was gone through for the review interviews and recommendations of these people?
The people on this agenda represent building level teachers and a social worker. So the process was that it was internally and externally posted, it was posted through OLS. They, the building principal pulled the resumes and screened the resumes or did some kind of screening off of the OLS program. It was a committee set at the building level. The committee interviewed them. Either one or two candidates in certain circumstances, one or two came to central office to meet with both Ashina and I, I'm sorry, Cecilia and I'm looking right at Ashina. And then we chose the recommendation and we met with them and got salary.
So there was a committee, interview committee that was formed for these?
These were, they were, all the committees were done at the building level, yes, a representative committee.
And who were the, who were the, people, but who were the people that made up the committee?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, I can tell you, each, each building had criteria and a committee at a building level. If you'd like to know specifically, I would have to ask, I don't have it.
What demographic did the committee represent?
Yeah, I got most of them from people's names, but they probably had a principal.
Parents or?
Just true. Did you have parents or?
Mr. Wright, one of the appointments is from JB Forestal, did you spearhead that committee?
Yes.
Can you come up and speak to it a little bit? So, not saying the people, but what, what representation did the committee have on it?
So for, it was according to the position we were looking to hire for, so for instance, if there was a special education, if there was a special education position, we made sure that special education teacher was on, on the committee. For LMS, for library media specialist, what I did is since that was more of a general selection, I had teachers from different constituents and on that. I tried to have an LMS teacher from one of the other schools, our former LMS teacher shared, but unfortunately, both times we had interviews, she was, she was away. So, I had constituents from, you know, early childhood teacher, upper grade teacher, et cetera.
So how many people did the committee compose of?
That, that position composed of was four of us.
Four?
Yes.
And so you had, for the, I'm looking at, that's the biggest bear.
For her, there were three of us on that committee, I made sure that there was a special education teacher on that committee as well, so.
So a special education teacher herself and?
Who was the third one, and then a regular education teacher.
Okay. Thank you. Is that what you were looking for, Mike? I just tried to use that as an example.
Because I know we've talked about procedure on how to, you know, go through the hiring process, you know, that way it's, you know, it's documented, we have a procedure to, you know, who, the types of people who want in these committees, who want stakeholders or parents or whatever, so that way it's clear to everybody, you know, the public knows how the process is going to go, the administration follows the process, we know the process that's going to be followed. So, my concern is that the, I want to make sure that, that there is a process, which I haven't seen yet, and I'm concerned that if we don't have a written approved process, whether or not we should, you know, make sure, you know, whether we should approve these people tonight without having gone through a standard, you know, process that we have approved in the district. We've been trying to get one for a long time.
Right, so the process that we shared with the board, that was a draft and that was the hiring process that we shared with you a few weeks ago, that process was also shared with the building principals more than one time. Even come on. So, that was the process that we led the charge. Um, so that was the process that we led to charge, so we gave to the building principal that document that had the policy on how to go about doing the hiring, um, and then all of the information then comes back to us, so we'll be kept at the Personnel Assistant, we can compile the data from there. So that information was how many, just pretty much the statistics I gave you on the PPS, um, how many people applied, how did you determine who was eligible, um, how many people did you interview, who was on the committee, what were the questions that you asked, um, and then how did you make your final determination, and then they came over to central office. I don't happen to have it all with me, but the principals, one of the requirements of that policy and the procedure part that we are setting up is that the principals will get that information together, bring it over to central office, and we will keep that information on file. I just don't happen to know it off the top of my head for the people here, um, but we have that documented.
Do we have a, a date when this procedure or process is gonna be finalized and approved?
Well, it's, it's not a board, it's not a board policy, although, you know, it's not a policy that will go through the policy committee, it's more of a process. Um, we have shared it with the building administrators, and we have gotten some feedback, but to be honest with you, we haven't gotten their, their final feedback. I don't want to put forward a document that someone can't live with, and they, they have, um, reason to bring up things that we may not actually look at, because they're looking at a building level. So I think in, in, there was, I think it might have actually even been your question prior, um, this will be the last week of vacation, so administrators are trying to take their vacations at the time when children are not here, so we will meet again as a group, and we will say final comments, and then come back with a final document for the Board. Um, I envision that to be the next couple of weeks to do that.
Will this, uh, procedure allow, you'll get comments from the Board as well?
Well, I think the draft that we shared with you, we were looking for comments if you had them, comments or questions, and if you had them, so that document was provided to you.
Is there a way for, we can have the, uh, the public provide comments on the hiring procedure, you know, whether you keep out the thing, pieces that you have to keep confidential, but that way they would see, hey, here's, here's the process that's gonna be followed, and even have some feedback or input to it?
Um, we can do it as a workshop if you want to walk through it.
So at least, at least people will then see, there's a process, and here it is, and we're in step number five, and here, and it has maybe a stakeholder, you know, some considerations in this area, you know, so we make sure that we capture everybody's concerns.
We can, we can gladly do that, we can walk through the process if the public knows what the process was.
I wanted to add also, there's, there is a NISBA sample policy ninety-two forty, which talks about recruiting and hiring, that could also intercept this effort. So maybe that's something the policy's gonna be.
Can you give that answer?
No, the policy, there's a sample policy by NISBA ninety-two forty, which is about recruiting and hiring.
Why, are you talking about a board policy, or are you talking about a process? Cause that's two different, that's two different, I just wanna be clear.
Uh, I want a, a process, doesn't have to be a board policy. I was looking at, here's the procedure, the process that we used to hire instructional personnel.
Just, just to make clear, um, some of the questions that you, uh, that you had, uh, just to let you know, the draft that was proposed was shared with the administrators in one of our admin meetings, and we did agree upon the fact that we would be using, you know, some of the, uh, procedures from the draft, and so that was carried out in the buildings, you know, we tried to make sure that we were a little into a lot of them within, uh, our hiring processes. So, um, you know, just to give you an example, uh, in some cases, it's easier for, uh, some levels to get in children for demo lessons, for teachers to do, um, candidates to do demo lessons, that, that took place in some of the buildings. When it wasn't applicable, what we did is we had, uh, we had a big writing sample that took place instead of that, so that we were able to get more, uh, artifacts on, on the candidates.
My concern is that we've been talking about this for a long time, and it just happens, it's kind of rolls and rolls and rolls, and I'm, I'm concerned, and maybe the motion, whether we table, table Alpha until we have a, a, a final procedure, um, to, you know, finalize and approve, so we know that we have it done.
So we could do that, okay, and that's your choice as a board, um, however, these teachers need to give notice to their district, and most of the teachers that are on the agenda have to give thirty days' notice, so there will be, there's a very good possibility that these teachers would not be there for the start of school. Um, so we did have, um, we did have hires the last agenda, which we, we put through, um, and those teachers were, you know, they, they were given notice the next day, and they will be here at the beginning of school. These teachers need to give notice, um, if they're approved tonight at the Board meeting by tomorrow, so that they, they could get here as quickly as possible. Um, according to this New York State Ed, your district can hold you for thirty days. So thirty days from tomorrow is very close to the beginning of school. Um, we, we may have, you know, so if we delay that, these, these individuals will not, um, be in the classrooms for the beginning of school.
So what would be the, the, the drop dead date that this would have to be approved, and we would have to, you know, if it were table, you know, theoretically, that this would have to be approved, and we would have to, um, approve personnel in order to not interrupt, uh, the beginning of school?
Um, we already are in, in jeopardy of not having people in school, so we worked out with these candidates when we did their final, um, that they would work out trying to get released early, because the priority would be that they would like to start, they wanna start in a classroom day one, and that they would work it out with their, um, with their administrators. Um, so, and I understand the urgency for the process, I'm not disagreeing with you, um, and I know that you've been talking about it, you know, publicly when you were on that side of the podium, and then since July here, um, but it's August fifteenth, um, and we are working hard about it getting a process, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I think it was something that I even mentioned before when I was speaking to Kristen, that we're trying really hard to get things together, and it's not gonna happen overnight. So the, the document that, um, we were talking about, that we gave out to the administrators, is probably the most concrete process that we've had here in years, I, I'm gonna be totally honest with you. So we're working towards resolving the issue. I think by taking, and, and, this is just my opinion, but, but, but taking people off the agenda because a process is not to its final completion yet, um, jeopardizes the start of school and jeopardizes classrooms, so I, I just worry about, um, you tabling this until the process is actually finalized. We're a good way there, um, we're in a better shape than we've ever been, um, but, you know, change takes time, and we're working towards getting that done, so, um.
My part of the issue, I think, is that the postings went out so late, so if we started to post right after the budget was voted on, we wouldn't be suppressing as much as we're pressing in the summer, and that's part of, hey, we need to get it out, but I think that was just, it wasn't feasible at that time to get it out, and if it was out at that time, I don't think that we'd be in the same state that we're in now. So, but, I wanna ask, what was your motion, again, so your motion was to table?
My motion, I have a big motion to table Alpha pending the review, uh, final, um, document for process for hiring instructional personnel. You know, final approved, that has been, you know, gotten feedback from the Board and from the public.
Anybody a second? Hearing no seconds.
I, I do wanna add on to Mike's comments, though, oh.
Well, I think he had a second, so then we could discuss it, then Anthony.
Oh, well, I'm going on the first motion, not my second.
Okay.
So make your motion, you, just to be clear, the motion didn't pass because there wasn't a second, but Anthony's commenting on the, the poll for discussion.
Okay, I understand, there was no second, therefore my motion is dead, and then Anthony's continuing the, Anthony's continuing the discussion.
Okay.
So, I, I generally agree with, with, with Mike's questioning, um, and, and, you know, I, I really think it's a crappy situation that we're, we're up against the fence and we have to hire, you know, make all these hires in a rush. You know, um, I, I also, I think, Emery touched upon, is that there were actually, there was no written plan before, uh, up until, uh, July, um, so, I mean, I, I think we're moving forward, and I, you know, wish we could move faster, but I understand that we can't. I, I would prefer that we had a final place, but I also don't want the children to be disadvantaged. So it, it, it is a really tough choice for me. Um, I would like to start calendaring, uh, progress in the, uh, in the, in the plan and, and the intersecting policy that would, um, that hopefully would strengthen the plan. Um, I would, um, also like to, to, you know, to mention that, you know, there, you know, obviously there's, there's some, um, some confidential information that, you know, some more process, but also, uh, a, a public version that they, that, or something for public consumption, that the public can understand what we're doing. Um, I think that's what, uh, what a lot of people want, or wanna know, uh, what you're doing, how we're getting their feedback into this process. I don't know when, I mean, obviously af- after all these things are done, um, we got school year, we got all these schools, um, I don't know when we can start calendaring this, but I, I feel that should be sooner rather than later.
So I wanna make sure that I have the building level administrators' final input, because they're the ones that have to actually do the work, and I wanna make sure that we've documented it appropriately, so I need them to all be in the same room. You know, we've been scheduling vacations kind of all over the place, and, and of course we encourage our administrators to take vacation in the summer, because we want them to be here during the school year, um, so we can work towards now, um, until the beginning of September. Um, I do wanna just say one little thing about, um, you know, posting after the budget vote, and I think that's a wonderful idea, however, just think back of who, who was actually working in central office at that time. Um, so I think, I agree with you, um, but there weren't, there weren't a lot of people there, so we need to get the people in place so that we could get the processes in order. So I think we're, we're moving down that track, we just have to, we have to have more people to do it, it's, you know, it's, it's in set, time-intensive kind of thing, so our goal for next year, as soon as the budget is passed, any openings that we have will go out, um, once the process is in place, so it will be, you know, we're working towards getting Beacon to be a functional place, and we're, we're moving in that direction, it's just not gonna happen overnight, I can't make that happen, I wish I could, but I can't.
What, so what do we need, besides, you said you need, we need people, so, or, or the district office is now getting staffed up, uh, I mean, is that, does that mean now we do have the people, or we still need more?
Need one more, Anthony, the superintendent.
Right. That's the next goal, to do that.
I think that would be a big help, having that superintendent, because they're gonna bring some components as well. And I think that, you know, going through the search process with a professional search firm, looking at what their best practices are as we're going through the superintendent search, maybe we could implement some of those, uh, at a lower level for other positions. And that, that's what excited me about the search firm, is we could take that component, because once they go through and they give it to us, it's our property, so then we can implement it and adjust it the way that we need. But yeah, I, I know, it seems like, you know, central office is fully staffed, but we still have one more important one, too.
I mean, in the interim, I mean, I don't know, while it's called a draft plan, um, it is being implemented, so I would like to consider it like a living document, um, so that we can continue to, continue to change it, continue to update it, um, include some of the comments that we received here, um, uh, you know, I know, uh, the Board has received emails from, uh, Jordan McCready, Kristen Flynn, Kristen Paul Browning, Lori Merrick, you know, um, uh, I think we should be, continue to evaluate how we do business and, and, and consider their comments.
I agree. Alright, so the motion for, uh, Five Point Oh One A?
Motion.
I still have a comment.
Sure.
First question. So, um, when can we have a schedule of, of, for putting the hiring procedure together? Cause you're gonna have your, you know, district personnel review it, building administration. We, I think we wanna have the public be able to give, you know, comment, feedback into it, we can see it as well, and then approval, so maybe by the next meeting, we have those dates?
Just by hearing what Emery was saying, that they're still doing some hires, I don't think the next Board meeting would be a, a, a reasonable amount of time to put that on. We also have some other components besides the hiring that we have to address as well, but I think that having it in a meeting in September, because not all administrators are back from vacation and so forth, so I, I think it would be a nice workshop in September.
I'm concerned about having the appropriate stakeholder involvement in interviews, et cetera, uh, which would be, you know, in the procedure and process to help make sure that it's.
We have, so, um, we have hires that still have to be done, but they're in the process right now, so they were things that could not be on the agenda as of now, but we still have openings, we have a few leave replacements, we have a few permanent probationary teacher positions as well. I, I don't disagree that we need to formalize the process. I will throw out there that at the next workshop, I have to present about the tax rate, because it is that time of year, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of things, so I can't, I can't commit to the next Board meeting, um, I don't even have the central office staff in place to do the work, um, and, and to do the transition, and to be honest, that we have three weeks till school, so I, I have to agree with Anthony that during September would be a time that I could, that would be the earliest time that we could commit to do that.
And I, just, Mike, just so you know, like, typically for the hiring process that I'm familiar with is that we're meeting today for a Board meeting, but when you have more than one Board meeting a month, that they have to get the stuff down to central office prior to, so it's typically been starting, and now they're probably in that reference check component, so, so then they can go, because then Emery and I will meet for, uh, setting the agenda, all that stuff has to be vetted and, and before that meeting, so then it can go onto the agenda, so you back it up, it's probably a backup of two weeks, which, that's where basically we're at, and I'd say two weeks from Wednesday, not, so three days until.
When I think that without, there's always something going on, without a forcing function, we're making something, you know, get done, there's always gonna be something to distract it, which is why I'm really raising the issue.
But don't forget, we also have to fill two Board seats, so what do you wanna handle first? Do you wanna handle the Board vacancies, or do you wanna do the process? What, what do you think is more important?
Yes.
We're trying to figure out and have enough for a quorum for each meeting, so I understand the component, and I understand what we're doing, but I, I don't know, what do you think is more important? Do you wanna address process, or do you wanna try and fill Board vacancy seats?
The most important thing is that we have, um, stakeholder involvement, which is working as foreign transparency, and that will be, you know, memorialized in the procedure. In the meantime, we need to consider that when we're going through the hirings and reviews and all that, uh, because that's, that's where we need to be.
I'm not disagreeing with that. But I don't know what action you wanna take, I didn't hear an answer, I heard a, a comment as to, about the process, but what would you, how would you like to handle that? So you, you presented the solution, a, a problem, and how, how we should go forward and what we need to address, but how, how do we go about addressing that in a timely manner when we have other pressing issues as well? And that's what I'm trying to say, we need to get the district in a functioning level, and I understand that it's not a, a best practice, and I totally agree with that, and I just don't know, I, I was worried about having a quorum tonight, and I know that on the twenty-ninth, we're probably gonna have just five people, if someone is sick, gets an accident or something, we're not gonna have it, and then what's gonna happen? So I feel that have, needing to fill Board seats is very important, um, you may think that the hiring process, and I know that process has been important and so forth, and I'm not dismissing it, but to start a school up, there's a lot of things that need to be in place, and they need to get in place during the summer. I've never had, seen a district have four Board meetings in August, and that's what we're doing. Um, so I, I don't think it's from lack of effort and so forth, and trying to address all the concerns, I think that every Board member here realizes that we have a lot of work to do, and, and I'm, I just don't know how much time, you know, when, when are we gonna fit it in? There, you know, there's other things as well.
So the, so the action that I requested was, if by the next Board meeting, we can have, you know, dates about when we'll go through the steps of getting the process completed?
This is September.
Okay, if it's September, then what are the dates? Here's the dates gonna go out to the, you know, be out to the public, here's when we need comments back, find, here's when we talk about it, and here's what's gonna be approved.
So, what, then what I got from Emery's comment was that she would be, she would be able to present about it in a, in a Board meeting in September in a workshop, and once the public heard it, then we could go forth and, and start, start adjusting it if need be. That's what my understanding was, I don't know what Mike.
At, at the very least, the Board has received a, a draft plan, I don't know, the Board members have commented on it so far, I do intend to submit some comments on it, um, at, at the very least, we could be responsible for ourselves, and set a deadline for us to submit comments, um, on that draft plan.
I agree.
So, I mean, does everybody feel that by the twenty-second, they can submit comments? Maybe two weeks, maybe a little more? weeks, need a little more, three weeks?
We could create, that's fine. I would say if we could do it before, whatever you want, doesn't matter.
Well, the next board meeting is 29.
29.
Right, so comments by the 29th, I appreciate your support, the workshop in September.
Okay.
So we send the comments to Ann Marie or Cecilia?
Send it to both of us.
One, okay.
All right. I need to be responsible for ourselves.
Okay, so the motion was for 5.01A. Is there any other comments? No? Okay. Motion to approve 5.01A.
Motion to approve 5.01A.
Georgia, a second.
Second.
Kenya, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
It was a 5.01. Mike, please. Okay. Okay, 5.01E, I need a motion for.
Motion to approve 5.01E administrative appointments. Second.
Sure, Kenya, comments, questions? Mike?
My question is, is could you go through the process we went through for selection of the two principal positions, the building principal positions?
Yes, both, both interim principal positions on the agenda this evening were two, they're two internal candidates that have experience at an administrative level, both being assistant principals. Both had applied for the open elementary principal position that we had in the district, and both had expressed, and so through applying for that open position, they have expressed an appointment, and, sorry, it's late, they have expressed their desire to be an elementary principal.
So you said that they had applied for the?
They had applied for the open elementary.
Open, yes, they had applied, okay.
Yes.
And also the other, another question is for the director of PPS.
Yes.
Can you go through the, just go through again?
Just the stats?
The stats that you have for that position.
Okay. The PPS position, we had a total of 36 candidates apply. Eleven candidates met the minimum qualifications, five were contacted for interviews, and three candidates accepted the interview. Before the interviews were taken place, one candidate later declined because they accepted a position in another district.
And so was there a decision not to go back out for another posting?
Yes, well, the decision was not to go back out for another posting for director of PPS, because we felt that we would get the same candidate pool, and there was not a strong candidate amongst the committee that they wanted to bring forward. I did not meet any of the candidates, so there was not a final candidate to bring forward. And the decision at that time was to look internally, to see if someone else met the requirements, and Mrs. Candela met the requirements, having been a school psychologist when she started here in Beacon, and being an assistant director, and then moving over to the building level. So coming back to central office for her and for us makes sense, because she gives a building perspective on the way back to be in central office. So we approached her and asked her to think about the position. It may have been something that she had been thinking about, she had not applied when we had posted the position originally, and she has, she has gratefully accepted. It's a challenge, you know, for any of our administrators, the three that are sitting here, and Mrs. Candela, who's on her way back from vacation. It's a change, it's a change for them. They're willing to step up to the plate and do what they can for Beacon, so I really appreciate that, and try to move the district forward.
And how do you, how do you see, how do you envision the stability of PPS with Candela in that role?
Mrs. Candela will have a bit of a learning purpose, things are a little bit different than when she was here last time. Cecilia, being the assistant superintendent for instructional services, we purposely did that position to kind of to oversee curriculum and instruction and also PPS. So there are people still in central office that have a knowledge of PPS to move that forward, and we've also decided not to fill the assistant director and do to CSE chair people, because the amount of meetings that have been going on have not worked, they haven't worked. There's just a lot of meetings in a short period of time with a certain amount of staff, and we needed to look at things a little bit differently. And to be honest with you, this is not something that hasn't worked this past year, this is something that has not worked for years. And the Band-Aid in the past has been that we've done a phenomenal amount of CSE meetings in the summer, and if the board remembers that they see a lot of things on the agenda, there were very few meetings this summer. The majority of them were done during the school year, the ones that are done over the summer were for students that either came and were recommended for services, or that moved into the district. So we're trying to find the right way to do this. It's, you know, with, we're trying to service students and get information out to parents as best we can, and so this is a model we're going to try. So we're confident it's going to work, but, you know, I can't guarantee you anything, we're going to see how we can address this.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
So according to the budget presentation for PPS, before the budget was approved, I counted 143.5 FTEs at the school level that were aligned to PPS office, and my concern is whether those 143.5 FTEs were receiving enough support from the district office, specifically the PPS office. I don't have a clear picture of the workload at the school level, but I get the impression that they're always busy, and there's possibly an increasing number of students needing PPS support, so can you speak on that?
I can. I just have a question for you, and, you know, I don't remember exactly the number, so you said 143.5?
143.5, yeah.
So I'm assuming that includes teachers, school psychologists, that's what you're talking about with the PPS department. So the good news, so I just spoke about not replacing the assistant director, right? So that was two administrative positions in central office, but we are having two administrative positions. So having an assistant superintendent for instructional services, and having a director of PPS, have two higher-level administrative positions. We also have two CSE chairpeople, so in actuality, we have more support at central office with this configuration than we would.
So the two CSE officers, an increase from one?
Yes.
Okay.
May I add to that? So one part of this is, and the work that we need to do around instructional services is, we need to begin to break down the silos that we have had between departments and within schools and district office. So part of the work, as I'm building systems and structures across the departments that fall under my oversight and responsibility, is about how it supports and integrates the work together. And so over the past year, there's been a lot of dialogue of issues that relate to students with disabilities, or issues that belong to the PPS office. All of our children belong to all of our schools and all of our school communities. And so that's very important in the work as we move it forward, that we have to be able to strengthen that our principals are our lead learners in schools, and that they have from support from the district office, from the various departments, whether it's curriculum and instruction, whether it's athletic and health services, whether it's pupil personnel, or whether it's the support out of human resources, that they have what they need, and that they have the ability to collaborate within and among their colleagues and subordinate staff, to be able to strengthen the work that we do across all classrooms. And so supervision and support for our teachers and students with disabilities, as well as our related service staff, don't belong exclusively within the director of PPS's responsibility, or the assistant director of PPS's responsibility. Ms. Baez and I have begun that work over the year, to really bring forward an integrated model, and begin to create new pathways, creating systems and structures that hadn't existed before. Ms. Corderoni spoke to, just having a schedule of when we would schedule out every child's annual review meeting was new for all of us, and so that's one small piece of a structure. But we need to be able to strengthen the work, that what happens in a classroom, whether it's a classroom that serves exclusively students with disabilities, or it's a classroom that serves exclusively gen ed students, or it's a classroom that has a blending of all students in it, that every student has access to high-quality curriculum and instruction, and supports and interventions. And so that's what the work and what the vision is about instructional services, and pulling together various departments. We've been hearing, and we listened to, that families need to have direct point of contact, and so that's the reason to increase our CSE chairperson, CPSC chairperson role to two, as to keeping the one, because under the director, the director of PPS can really focus on that work with their building-level administrative colleagues, and providing the supervision for what's happening in instruction, but allowing CSE chairpeople to only have those responsibilities, so that they can be the direct point of contact for our families, for our school personnel, and ultimately that supports our students. So that's what that shift is about. Do we know if it'll work 100%? No, but we're, this is, you know, the metaphor is, we're building the plan as we're flying it, and that's what we've been doing. So we're making adjustments where we can, we're trying to triage what is most critical. We would, in a perfect world, like everything to be set, because we can't leave any piece of this behind, but it is a work in progress. And so whether we're talking about hiring practices, whether we're talking about the systems and structures in any one department, curriculum and instruction, pupil personnel, we can make changes to how we go about doing things. How we bring everybody into that process is where the real work begins. And so this is important. We all have, and were asked, and I asked and laid out a charge, that we use the hiring practices as a work in progress, so that before we put it to its concrete and final form, that we had the aspect of how is it working at a school level? Will it work across all of our schools? Will it be something that supports everyone's needs? And that's what my expectation was, and Ms. Corderoni's expectation was, and what we were doing process-wise within schools. When we get it to final print, and we need to do that, then it's about how we ensure and support that everyone is able to carry that out consistently. So, but that's, I want us to feel to have a sense of, there's a lot of things, and a lot of moving parts, and a lot of changes, but the one thing that needs to happen, and certainly will happen under my leadership, is that we need to do it in an integrated way, because we have been operating in very sectioned off components of district function.
Does that include, whether the resource is sufficient, the FTEs is sufficient, this is building the plan while you're flying it, would that include at some point a relook of whether or not just resources to attend to our children that are attending meetings?
Yeah, we're constantly, I mean, we have to constantly be assessing where we're at, do we have the programs and supports and structures in place that our students demand at any point in time? And then how we balance the decision-making of that. We have to begin first and foremost, and the work that we did through the committees on special education, and the work that we were tirelessly doing within and among all of our staff, was what information, what evidence is coming to the table that's informing, how do we know what our students need, where their assessed needs are at right now, and then ultimately, how do we know if those supports and structures are working for them or not? And so that is, that is one big shift that we have seen across the process, in terms of engaging our families in more meaningful ways. You know, is everything foolproof? No, it never will be, but I can tell you that we've gotten a lot of feedback from families about feeling like they were a part of the process, where they maybe had never been invited into the process, or had to leverage their way into the process before. And being asked for what their concerns were for students, for their children, what they saw in relation to what school staff were reporting, as to what the strengths and areas of improvement and areas of continued need would be. So there's much work to be done across all of the work that we do, but certainly, we are trying to make these steps that will be able to bring in more meaningful contact, and having chairpeople assigned to only supporting the work of this process, and the connections for families is one way we're going to look to make that happen.
I don't want to see any actual debate between the two, what I want to ask is that somewhere, even in the first quarter, give a workshop on progress.
Absolutely.
And comments?
The, did the resolutions include leave of absence at that moment, or do?
We have four internal candidates, of which have tenure in the positions that they're currently at. So we have in the past granted leave of absence if an administrator does change to a new position within the district. Leave of absence is only for a year. So there's a year to decide if that's the right decision, if that's the right move, and we've talked a few times also about having a new superintendent come in. So it gives the protection for all of our four administrators who have been here in the district, that gives them the security that they need.
And how long will these, how long will these candidates be able to regain their tenure?
I don't.
Is it dependent, I guess, for the principals, do you need this four years?
The principals have a four-year tenure, yes, so it's easier.
Any questions? All right, so we're moving on, motion 5.01E. I need a motion for 5.01.
Motion to approve.
Georgia?
5.01E.
Second.
Second.
Kenya? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So without further ado.
I have to introduce our three administrators that are here, and that have been waiting patiently, so if you could just stand up so everyone in the room can see you. Mr. Eric Wright, Ms. Cassandra Orser, and Ms. Ashina Baez.
You guys want to make statements, or are you good? Sure. Come on, Mr. Wright.
I just want to say thank you to our interim superintendent, Ms. Ann Marie Corderoni, assistant superintendent, Cecilia Dazaro-Romley, and to the board education. I'm going to, as always, try my best to support the children of our district, you know, I heard a lot of passion tonight, and for those who know me from J.B. Forster, I'm passionate about helping children, you know, achieve what it is, and giving them the tools that they need to be successful adults. So charge me with that, because that's what I'm here for, and I hope that I serve you guys well. Thank you.
In harmony with those amazing words, I just want to say thank you to the families and parents. As a parent and a resident of Beacon, I have a strong investment in our students and in our families. Being student-centered and family-driven, I look forward to being the leader that is a leader that takes into consideration the voices of other parents, and the voices of the community. Having a strong background in family and community engagement, I look forward to engaging each and every one of you in ways that make sense for our children, keeping the focus, knowing that special education is a center of my heart as a parent of a child with a disability, knowing the background that I have in PPS, and the background that I have in curriculum instruction. I look forward to working collectively, because it definitely takes the village to raise just that one child, so I'm excited to be here. Thank you so much for the opportunity, and look forward to getting to work.
Did you feel forced to make a statement?
No, I would also like to echo a lot of what both Eric and Ashina already had said. Thank you all for being supportive throughout my time in Beacon. I'm very excited to start my eighth year with the district, and to take on this new challenge and the opportunity within the district. Beacon is a wonderful district to be in. I've enjoyed every minute that I've been in the district, and I really just hope to make new relationships with the parents and the community at Lenham, and, you know, really hear what the parents in the community want to see, and help to continue Lenham in the fabulous track that it's on. So I thank you all.
Thank you. I just want to point out that we are going to hold you up high expectations, and it's going to the bar is set way up high, and if we feel that you're not doing it, we will kick in the butt to go forward, okay? All right, with that said, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
I need a second. I need a second.
Second.
Oh, Anthony, Anthony answered for a second tonight. All those in favor, uh, comments, questions? Please, no.
I can keep, I can keep going.
No, it's okay, Anthony. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, Kenya, uh, carried? Kenya, first, yeah, well, oh, I did.